Anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward, state your name, address, and zip code.
Can I remove my... My name's Elaine Nagel. I live at 551 Broadmoor Boulevard. I did not get notification, but my house is like one or so away from people that did get notification. Some of the neighbors are working. They're not real pleased with this, and for numerous reasons. I'm like this young man here. I don't particularly like the idea of commercial moving into the neighborhood. I already back up, completely back up to commercial property. Restaurants, two restaurants. Across from Beverly is two bars, and if this restaurant enlarges, they already have a bar within their building. Will they make the bar bigger? Will they have the bar open at night? And my concern about that is, we have people driving down Broadmoor Boulevard on the average of five times at least a year that run up into the yards. They hit trees, and we had that happen again just last week. Young man ran up into the yard and hit a tree, and of course, he totaled his truck, but... And we've had one come very close to one of the houses. What I would like to see preferably is that they just shut Beverly off altogether and not allow the through traffic. Right now, we have traffic coming from Kings Highway through going out Yuri Drive, so it's a cut through. They don't want to go to the corner of Yuri and Kings and go through that area. So my concern is with the bar. I was not understanding that they were going to tear the building down, and so they're going to, y'all can go ahead and zone it commercial, and then they can build anything. It seems like to me that they would have to supply you with a plan before they do that. It would make a lot more sense to me. And also, what are their hours going to be?
Ms. Nagel, the questions that you're asking are very good questions, but at this particular time, the staff will be considering all of those at a later date. Today, all we're dealing with is a rezoning.
Would that be...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Would that be after you go ahead and rezone it?
They'll still have to come back to our staff before you know it.
Okay, I am just like totally against rezoning, period. Let them do what they can on what they've got, what they probably should have done if they wanted to. Enlarges move down the street in front of the TV station to that big building that's a restaurant there. They would have had more room there instead of trying to rezone and rebuild where they are. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
But before you leave, just so you'll understand, whatever this group does today can be appealed to the City Council.
Okay.
At some point down the road.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Craig, would you care to do any kind of rebuttal?
Well, in response to the previous speaker's comments, I don't see how the expansion of existing restaurant is going to cause that much more traffic. And also, I got the contact information for the young man here. Since he's a neighbor, we're going, we'll get a copy of the site plan to him once it gets developed and keep him on the loop. So we want to be a good neighbor, for sure, so... But other than that, I don't have any comments.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, any comments for Mr. Craig before he leaves the mic?
What was, what was the feedback from the neighborhood participation meeting?
There were no neighbors there. The only, you're talking about from the neighborhood participation meeting?
Yes, sir.
The only two people that showed up were around the corner there somewhere that were planning on doing something. I just want to see how the neighborhood participation meeting operated, but there was no, no neighbor showed up for the meeting. That had any questions about the particulars of the project?
You need to talk to Mr. Clark now, if you have anything else to share. You need to talk to Mr. Clark. Yes, ma'am. Any more questions?
That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Craig. All right, board members. You have heard the pros and cons. Just a tickle of the tongue. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir!
If you will allow me, please.
Before you take a motion, this always concerns us,
and we always evaluate the effectiveness of neighborhood participation plan meetings and the attending, attendance and the lack of attendance. And sometimes, the lack of attendance is a matter of failures of the best notification that's possible. It appears that that's what these citizens are saying, because that's the purpose of these meetings is to be able to, in a, in a less formal setting, share exactly what's being planned, how it will happen, and answer all the questions that they have. You do have the option to allow this applicant to, to attempt to have another neighborhood participation plan meeting to take care of all those issues. So the neighbors will be at least more comfortable since they were not aware of a lot of the things that apparently is about to happen. I just wanted to share, and the lady that, that I went and spoke with was sharing with me that they would have attended, they just did not know that there was a meeting being conducted, for whatever that's worth to the board.
All right. Mr. Joseph?
If I may, Mr. Chair, given Mr. Clark's comments, I'd move to defer.
Okay, I have a question before, can I ask? Okay, um, we, the notification process was done?
It was done.
That's a question. Was it? It was done. But it was deficient in some way. I'm just trying to understand.
I didn't understand deficient. Mr. Craig said that there were only two people in attendance, and neither one of these citizens were in attendance. So I was just sharing that that may have been some confusion, the reason that they did not get the notification and were in attendance at that particular meeting.
But that's what I'm asking. Do we have someone here that's in opposition that's saying they did not get notified? That's what I'm asking.
We have the citizen that spoke that said...
She's slightly outside the area, as I appreciate it.
Is she outside the notification zone?
Yep. She said she was just...
But I gather that her and, is it Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
I think they'll have people there at the national.
She said she lives on Broadmoor.
All right.
So then I'd make the motion to the floor.
Any more questions? We have a motion on the floor.
Second, the department.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Curtis and a second by Mr. Morton to defer and continue. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right. Very good. That motion carries. Thank you. This particular time, we'll go to item number seven, case number 21-76-C, rezoning request, Belcher Enterprise Construction and Remodeling LLC.
Hey, y'all doing today? My name's Kevin Belcher. I live at 2901 Mollum Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana 71109. And I'm here to extra rezoning for my business at 2901 Mollum and a special liquor license, special license so I can sell alcohol.
Can you tell us a little bit about your business, sir?
It's a convenience store, and I have beer and high-volume wine sales already there. I bought it on March the 20th, and that's about it.
You bought the property on March 20?
Yes, yes, sir.
2021?
Yes, sir, this year. 2021.
All right. Any questions for this gentleman?
You're already zoned for beer and wine and selling now?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right. In reference to the neighborhood, is anyone, have you done any surveying? Or was there any kind of neighborhood participation meeting?
We, we had a neighborhood participating meeting, and I think 12 people, 12 people, 17 people showed up in favor of it. No one showed up against me during the meeting.
All right, sir. For those of you in the audience, you'll have an opportunity in just, just a minute. All right. Any other, any questions for this gentleman? Any additional questions? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? And please be advised that this is a rezoning request only. Hearing none, is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? The first person that comes has 10 minutes, and the second person has three, and so on.
Good afternoon. I'm Dolores Dennis. I live at 3318 Westheimer Street, Lakeside, in Lakeside. I have a list of persons who live in that area. We are opposing the rezoning. The previous owner would close her place at 8:00, even though she had beer there. It never was any loitering. We didn't have any crimes. And we feel that with the liquor license and extended hours, we're open up for more crimes. And we hope that you will consider all those things. And I have a list of all those persons who did not go to the meeting, but they signed a name in objection of the rezoning.
Well, Ms. Dennis, if you'd share those with that gentleman right beside you.
Pardon me?
Give those to him.
Sure. Thank you. Okay.
Before you leave the podium, are there any questions for Ms. Dennis?
How many people, Ms. Dennis, is it Dennis or Stennis?
Pardon me?
I'm here. Right here, in front of you.
I'm sorry.
How many, how many signatures do you have on that?
Um, seeing me, I counted 68. It might be more or less.
Is it Ms. Dennis?
Pardon me?
Is your name Ms. Dennis?
Is it Dennis or Stennis?
Oh, Dolores Dennis.
Dolores Dennis. I'm sorry.
Yes.
How far do you live from this store right here?
Uh, about two blocks.
About two blocks? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions, board members? All right. Very good. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward.
My name is Bette Williams. I own some property on 2834 Looney and 2836 Looney. And I had got that up back, and I, I am against them doing that because people are trying to raise their family up. I'm against, and I would like to sign my name to that sheet.
Ms. Williams, would you care to give us your address, please?
My address is 1319 Kenneth Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana 71103. But I have property at 2834 Looney and 2836 Looney.
All right, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Williams? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request?
Yes, my name is Juanita Turner, and I live at 2856 Looney Street, which is a few steps, well, west, south of 2901, the property that's being considered for rezoning. And I am in, in opposition to the serving of more liquor simply because when the store was rezoned and they were selling liquor, which was not with this last owner, but there was just too much disturbance on this, on the corner. And, well, actually, there's nothing too much in the blocks close to the store but rental property. There are very few homeowners. And we've got youngsters that, well, just roam, and we just don't need any, any more liquor, actually, because we feel as though this is just giving too much credence to get into too much. And, and then too, there are a number of, there are enough, I'll say, liquor stores within the vicinity to, that people can, you know, go and buy. But I, I'm just against the rezoning of this property for liquor license.
All right. Ms. Turner, any questions for Ms. Turner? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Sharon Brim. I live at 2900 Ashton Street, which is on the corner of Ashton and Arkansas. I am too against it. We have enough liquor stores within the neighborhood, around the neighborhood, for them to be able to go to. I am actually a homeowner there, and it is actually within the community. Yes, we do have rental properties there, but we have enough in our neighborhood already going on with adding any additional stuff. And I think that kind of liquor coming to the neighborhood, and he already has the extended hours going on. I am totally against it.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
Do I have any questions?
Any questions?
Because I live close to it. All right.
At this particular time, if I may, I'd like to invite all of those to stand who are in the chambers, who are in opposition to this, so that we might get a head count. Did you understand? Please stand so we can get a head count as to those in opposition to this particular request. For the record, there are 10 individuals in opposition. I'm sorry? 10 individuals in opposition. 10 individuals in opposition. Thank you very much. At this particular time, sir, you have the opportunity for rebuttal if you'd care to come back up and make any kind of statements.
Well, they're preparing my business to what was there before me. I invested over half a billion dollars in that place. They can't compare me to what somebody else had prior to me. And my hours are just, I don't have no loitering. We haven't been, the police haven't came in and did no arrests of selling the kids or anything like that. And it's liquor in the neighborhood, and I'm just trying to get a license so I can sell it there. That's it.
All right. Any more questions for this gentleman?
What are your hours?
We, right now, we open from 8:00 to 10:00.
All right. So thank you very much.
All right.
All right, board members, you've heard both sides of this particular request and concerns. Any discussion?
I would like to make a motion.
All right.
Are we there?
We're ready for a motion then.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Second, motion from Ms. Newbert and a second from Mr. Joseph to deny. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right. Thank you very much. At this particular time, we'll move to case number 21-101-C, Belcher Enterprises Construction and Remodeling. This is a request for special use permit.
Did y'all just deny me?
Yes, sir.
So how do I appeal that? I can appeal this to the City Council, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So we don't need to talk on what we appear now for, because it's the first one denied?
If you choose not to, that's fine, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll appeal it. All right. Thank you, here.
All right, counselor, I need some help on...
Will you say something, Mr. Chairman?
He chooses not to proceed with the, with the next case.
It would, it would be appropriate if you just go through the process.
That's where we go. That's what I needed to hear.
With a motion and vote on the...
All right. At this particular time, you'll entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second, motion by Ms. Newbert, second by Mr. Joseph.
Hey, sir, can we defer it? I apologize. Can we defer it? I apologize.
At this particular time, we have a motion to deny. Just a second. We'll have to call for a vote, and then we can come back to your request.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Newbert, second by Mr. Joseph. To deny. All those in favor of that particular motion, vote yes. Oppositions, vote no.
We have to vote? I'm asking.
From a procedural standpoint, yes.
Were we proposing a substitute motion, Mr.? No, sir.
No, sir.
No, I said from a procedural standpoint, yes.
All right. All right. That request has been denied for a special use permit. This particular time, we go to case number 21-79-C.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, just for clarification, I just want to make sure that the applicant understands that he has appeal rights to the City Council.
He does. He stated that.
Okay. I just want to make sure he understands that.
I think you made that perfectly clear, because Ms. Newbert...
It was a little confusing while we were doing this.
All right. We're good?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Case number 29-79-C, 21-79-C, special use permit and site plan, GB License LLC. Special use permit. Anyone here?
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Goodson, and I'm an attorney with Taylor Porter Brooks &amp; Phillips in Baton Rouge. The address is 451 Florida Street, Suite 800-70821. Before I begin, I'd like to say I was born and raised in Shreveport. I do this all over the state. So I'm especially glad to be home and able to advance any sort of business that I can here and seeing Shreveport progress. I certainly think that's the matter with this particular client of mine, GB License LLC, that will be doing business and is already doing business here as GoPuff. They are, they have a nation, a nationwide existence right now. They're, they are in over 800 cities with over 450 sites. When I heard that they chose Shreveport as one of their first three cities in Louisiana where they're locating, I was more than excited. You know, when we learned that there was potential neighborhood opposition, of course, we were disappointed. But that's what we're here to address. The property is currently zoned C3, and we are currently leasing Suite A and Suite B. Out of Suite A, GoPuff is operating a retail store that sells everything from baby products and pet products to over-the-counter medicines, food beverages, cleaning products, home products. Think of it as something like a Walgreens or Rite Aid, but with much more to offer, and delivery is its main existence right now in the retail store and in that portion of Suite A. In order, and by right, under C3, as you know, they are allowed to sell beer and wine, which they will be applying for that alcohol permit. Due to Section 16 of the local rules in the Shreveport ordinances, if they want to sell alcohol of high content, being liquor, in addition to their beer and wine, it must be physically separated, which is why Suite B was leased. Otherwise, they would not have. That is, there are a handful of places where they have to have a walk-in setup, so they're certainly used to that, but it's just not their regular course of action. They're doing this in compliance with the local rules. We started this process last fall, formally in November. To just give you a quick bit of history, we understood that the neighborhood participa, participation plan was developing and that it was becoming mandated, and we worked our way through that and trying to learn exactly what needed to be done. And by April 23rd, we prepared a project narrative and conceptual site plan and submitted that with a site plan pre-app. On May 13th, we attended pre-app conference, and after that, made all of the suggested additions and revisions that were asked of us. On May 20th, in accordance with the Neighborhood Participation Plan, we held a meeting via Zoom, Google Meets, which is like Zoom. And according to my records, at least nine neighbors attended that. Two or three voiced concerns, which we certainly heard and understand, and we share some of the same ones in that we don't want loitering and we don't want crime. And we actually take a lot of measures in security and whatnot to prevent such. Right now, if you were to drive by this location, you would see that it's not marked. It's not, this is not something that they try to attract. They don't, they don't want to attract loitering. They don't want to attract foot traffic in terms of people standing on a corner. They don't plan to add signage. And that's, that's the fact of the matter. We tried to address some of those concerns and thought that we did. Following that first neighborhood meeting, GoPuff was asked to host a second neighborhood meeting. And even though that is not mandated and it's not part of the requirements, they agreed because they do have interest in being a good community partner and neighbor. They want to see this property maximize its use as much as, as anyone. So on July 8th, they had the second meeting, and Cameron Kilburg, who is a governmental affairs principal, flew in to Shreveport from DC. We wanted the most well-versed person to be here to try to address any concerns and answer any questions. Following that, we did have this meeting pushed from originally being in July to August in order to host the second meeting that was requested. And last week, we did receive the staff report, which we were very pleased to see each particular part of Section 16 that was addressed was addressed positively. And, you know, it was pointed out that GoPuff met every specification and design requirement and satisfied the requests that were made of them. And as land use and zoning currently exist, they met all requirements. Unfortunately, due to neighbors' concerns, there is the recommendation on the staff report. You know, we've, we've certainly seen this before. The, you know, the irony a little bit in this particular one is that because there are already surrounding existing uses that are allowed that are similar to this, it's being called oversaturation. I, I have trouble with GoPuff being likened to just another corner liquor store or just another dollar store or just another whatever. That's not, that's not what GoPuff is. It's not what they, they try to be. This is a business that we want to have in this area. This is a company that we want to have in Shreveport. It is on the cutting edge in terms of what's to come, their concept and how it is organized, and their intentionality behind being a community partner. Should not be mistaken with just trying to sell liquor. This is a part of what their foundational business concept is. It is located on a commercial corridor. It's two blocks from the interstate. Within the staff report, in my understandings, in the meeting yesterday, it was pointed out that this is a compatible use with the neighbor, with the neighborhood in which it exists. There are three surrounding commercial zones, and to say that this is being located within a residential area, I would have to disagree with. It's on a commercial corridor where there is quite a bit of commercial business already happening around them, and yes, including alcohol sales. But for that reason, you know, I do want you to consider, this is a land use request. Does it fit within the master plan? And it does. Yesterday, this was referred to as not only a commercial area, but a medium-to-heavier commercial area within which this use fits. I know that there are neighbors here who want to speak, and I want to reserve that time so I can also answer or address some of the concerns that they may raise. Our store, our general manager is here today, Tracy Thompson, who can also speak to the day-to-day activity. They've been in operation since November. My understanding is, since November, they've quadrupled in terms of the number of sales that they have per day. But again, we're here to answer any questions and address any concerns.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Goodson?
I do.
Before you leave, ma'am?
Oh, yeah.
I have one, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Goodson.
Okay, so I was reading a little bit about the organization. Delivery is the, is the main part of this business plan, right? You're delivering?
Their base concept plan, yes, is delivery. Delivery, as I'm sure you're aware, over the last four or so years, has been an evolving and ever-evolving topic of conversation, process, and regulation being considered at the state level all the way down. The state level, it's obviously, it's there, and in many local jurisdictions, it's already there. This, you know, is a timeline in terms of you have to anticipate what is to come. They had hoped that by now, this would, that delivery would have passed or have been permitted. In terms of delivery of alcohol, excuse me. The retail is already permitted. But in terms of alcohol, you may ask why we're still here today, if that's part of the concept plan, and it's still an issue in Shreveport in terms of the alcohol request. As I stated, it's an ever-evolving process. We don't know what is to come in the future. We have been told that it's a possibility. And this has now become such an investment for this client in terms of how many months of work has been put into this already that, you know, we're not going to defer this. We want to try to move forward with it. And should it pass, they still intend to apply for a permit to sell liquor outside of it, and they will just do so at retail. There is a space in the front of the store where the public commit, we're required to have five hundred to a thousand suite of public committable space, depending on what you're selling, beer and wine, or beer, wine, and liquor. And that's just what they would do in the interim.
So, they, I was reading in your application that they, they will make, make an order in person through an iPad? Is that correct?
That's correct, if they were to walk in as a customer.
So, they would not be pulling from the shelves?
That is correct, unless the city required those aisles to be open. But that is not their concept.
Okay. And just a, just a general question, looking at the building itself, why is it so generic? I mean, I noticed there's no signs. That's part of the, the business plan. What, what's the, what's the thought?
Well, they don't need to attract foot customer. You know, if the, if the concept is delivery, that's the, they don't need to attract someone coming in. Now, in order for this to pass in hopes of delivery of alcohol to pass, that's what we'll do to keep this ball moving.
Because what's going to happen here is if you're successful today, you will not be allowed by ordinance to deliver the alcohol. Is that, do I have that correct? Because our, our statutes do not allow that at this point in time.
And is somebody from ABO here, Mr. Clark?
I'm sorry?
Is someone from ABO here?
No one's from ABO.
Okay. Because there's some, there's some question, is it, is it permitted? Is it prohibited? That's sort of what's out and trying, everyone's trying to understand each and every local ordinance until the state hands down its next.
It's kind of a misfit right now.
It is. Shreveport is a little bit of one, is my understanding. It's been made clear in other local jurisdictions already. And, and the commissioner is keeping a very close eye on that and following that per every local jurisdiction.
I would be more apt to support this if we don't have the, the traffic, which is this, this successful decision today would basically open you up for foot traffic going into that facility until, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clark, until such time that our ordinances allow, our laws allow the delivery of alcohol. Am I correct?
The, the situation, and fortunately, there was a representative from ABO at the Neighborhood Participation Plan meeting. And at that meeting, he did not imply that the city of Shreveport was interested in allowing any delivery of alcohol. He actually stated that they were opposed to the delivery of alcohol.
How do y'all intend to overcome that?
That is, right now, such, it's an issue at the state level that is going very well in our favor because that is not, and when I say our, I mean any retail establishment, that retail restaurant, whatever it may be, that may apply for the delivery license. The state ATC is developing and continuing developing their procedures and protocols, particularly for places where this is not a decided issue. And that is what we're following right now. And so, in terms of what we would do in Shreveport in order to try to answer your question better, we want to go ahead and have this approved today, so the last nine months are not for not and a complete loss of an investment. Apply for the liquor permit to have it there. They have no plans right now to put signage out that says, "Come in, come get this." This is not a walking store, liquor store. Based on the permit they would have in the interim, the door would be open, but it would only have this small space with the kiosk. You actually don't even have to come in to place the order on the kiosk. You can do it from your phone. It's an online app. That's how all deliveries are made right now, and so that's the concept they already have in place. You could do the same thing from your car, place the order, get out, and then someone from the back brings your order to the front, hands it to you.
I'm assuming at some point, they're verifying eligibility in this purchase.
They're, I'm sorry?
They're verifying eligibility in this purpose.
Oh, absolutely. This is, they have zero tolerance policies in place for that.
All right, any more questions for Ms. Goodson?
Ms. Goodson, my staff has indicated in the report that this area is oversaturated. To that extent, has your client done any like market study to apprise this board of how many there are in the area? What, why, why would my staff use that term, oversaturated?
So, that's sort of what I was speaking to earlier in terms of irony. It's, it's interesting. Depending on what chambers I'm in, oversaturation is, is called that, or it's called you fit the use in what already exists, and therefore, by right, we want to acknowledge that for you and not unfairly tell you, you cannot. There were many analysis they have. This, this company has many boards in place that before they locate somewhere, they do a lot of research. They determine that, and that it's, it's a good location, not only the city, but the particular area. One of the things that they actually do is they have someone who can tell how many times their company has looked up or searched for in an area. They can tell how many times a certain zip code is written in, does this exist within the ten-mile area? And I know that there's certain, there's one or two neighborhoods. My understanding is that the majority of the neighbors who have some concerns are all from one or two neighborhoods. Six were cited as being nearby neighborhoods, all the way from, I believe it was Hollywood, Cedar Grove, South Highlands. Six neighborhoods were cited, Caddo Heights, as being those that were nearby. And I would have to assume that this, when the analysis was made, that, that it was that broad, because they're not focusing on two to three blocks.
You grew up in Shreveport?
I did.
Where?
I grew up in South Broadmoor, by LSU S.
So, a pretty good distance from this.
Yeah, my great-grandparents and my grandparents were right there in Cedar Grove.
But when they lived there, there weren't all these liquor stores in the neighborhood. I think, I think, I have to indicate, I mean, fate would dictate that your case would fall right behind the one that just went, that was trying to sell higher-end, you know, higher contact, higher content alcohol to the neighbors, and my concern is the same. But thank you for your presentation.
I appreciate that, and I, and I appreciate the concern, and I just want to reiterate, that's not their target. That's not their intention. It's not their business concept. And they will actually be implementing measures to avoid the exact concerns that the neighbors have. And that is from security in place, lighting, building fencing, building buffering, not creating attractive nuisance. We have the same exact concern, and we'll be moving in a direction to avoid that, which I would hope people would consider, should, should a company like that come in that's going to do that, that might somehow positively affect the problems that are happening around it.
That might, without, you know, the...
Yes, and what I mean by that is if you think, I mean, I hear all this in the background, and if it just, for a moment, you'd consider what happens when a successful competitor comes in?
That might be the case if they were selling a different product.
What's that?
I said it might be the case if they were selling a different product. If they're going to be selling the same product that's causing the problem, generally speaking, then I don't really grasp the analogy.
Well, they...
And again, I don't want to get into a back...
Sure, 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 sure. Sure, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson.
Any other questions?
Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I'm going to beg you to indulge us by being quiet when you hear these persons as they were when you were at the mic. So, let's be courteous to that point. Thank you. At this point, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request?
I'm John Settle. I'm an editor and a publisher and sometimes advocate. My home address is four Tealwood. I want to declare, I'm really here to, on behalf of the owner of the property, and how much time do I have?
Three minutes.
All right. Very quickly, aisles are not required in liquor stores, to my knowledge. There's a one on, thrifty on Pyramid, nine forty-nine, you just walk to the counter. Secondly, the outside appearance is generic on, on purpose, so that you don't know what's there. I rode by, I missed several times. The reason being is, people are not encouraged to walk in. In fact, they don't want them walking in. They want them to order online and have it delivered to their home for a dollar ninety-five delivery. There's not going to, they don't want walk-in traffic. It's not the business model. You can order everything from aspirin to ice cream, delivered to your house, one ninety-five. You could say that area is oversaturated liquor store. It's not oversaturated with the liquor store that has home delivery. And let's be honest, if people are going to be home drinking and run out of alcohol, it'd be a lot better if they ordered it rather than drove down the street. My client, the owner of the property, has provided to the staff a large number of letters in support of this, over a hundred and forty, I believe. And I would make a couple of notes. One, that, that his structure there has improved the neighborhood. I mean, let's be real, a Neiman Marcus is not going to move in there. I went to the, the meeting, and everybody wants Cedar Grove to be Neiman Marcus or Southern Trace. That's just not the reality. I'm sorry. It's not the reality of the business world. Things change. My client paid two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this property. He has a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in renovation. This concept with GoPuff is a national concept. It's new to our area, but home delivery at a reasonable price is where we are in today's world. Home delivery of high-end alcohol will actually make the city safer. People will not get out drunk to get more alcohol. I believe that the citizens are going to follow me, are going to parrot too much liquor, too much crime, and they're ignoring this business model with all due respect to these people. And thank you. I'm glad not to be the oldest one in the room today. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Settle? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request?
Hi, my name is Shamiko Parker. I live at two fifty-five with seventy-six. I'm, I'm for this company coming. I do have an aunt. She's, she's in a wheelchair. It's lots of things that that store can give us when I'm not around to her. She can order. And it keeps me and my sister, it keeps her, she can order what she wants instead of us going picking out different things for her. For me, is that place, I go there for myself. And now I will, if, if that place will come GoPuff, I will be ordering offline. My family will be ordering to deliveries of our house. For me, the way I see it, it's less foot traffic, less loitering coming, going, coming through. Patrolling, a new business to me, police will be around more to kind of see the activity that's going on, if any activity goes on. Security is in place at all times when I researched it. So, for me, from that area, I'm, I'm for that.
Any questions for Ms. Parker? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request?
Hello, hello. My name is Robert Diamond. I live at three sixty-seven seventy-six, Seven Second Street, and I'm totally for...
Your last name again, sir?
Minor.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And I'm totally for this simply because it's something new to, for the, the community. And it also is in, they picked this particular, I, I think they picked this particular area because this area can be something different than what it's, has always been. And we bringing new concepts and new things to this particular area, that will weed out some of the things that go on in the area because the property value will go up, and that will push a lot of the crime and a lot of the things that's in the area away. So, I'm totally for this simply because it's something new. It's a different idea. And when you see other people growing in a certain area, it will bring other business to this area and allow this area to grow and push away the crime and the, the loitering and all the things that goes on in the area. It will help move that away. So, I'm for it simply because it's something new. It's something brilliant, and it will bring other things to the area. So, that's why I'm for it.
Any questions for Mr. Minor? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do. Do you, Mr. Minor, do they, do you use their service now for, for products?
Oh, my God, GoPuff is, it's nice. It's like they have a bunch of these places. Even when I travel to go out of town, I use it. It's very convenient because of, like they said earlier, you know, when you run out of your alcohol, you run out of your food, you, it's not even just for alcohol. You can go get chips, cereal. You don't want to drive. You're tired. This place will deliver it to you. It's friendly. It's cheap. It's just like DoorDash. So, it's something new and something places. I think it's a great idea.
I, I would imagine just for working folks that are, have conflicts in their schedule, I love my Walmart delivery for that reason.
There you go. There you go.
So I can't imagine that this would be much different in the way that that's perceived.
Yeah, and that's what I, that's how I consider it. Because, you know, a lot of us are busy. You know, have time to stop off to go to the, the liquor stores, and some of us don't want to even go inside of these liquor stores because of the way they are. So I prefer something clean, something fresh, and something new. And that area definitely deserves something new. And we stay in the same mindset of what we have and not allow it to grow, it'll never grow. So that's why I'm for it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Minor. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present?
My name is Charles Chaneyara. I live at seventy-three forty Capistrano Drive, Shreveport. I am a landlord of the property. So since I bought property, uh, it was vacant since while, over six years. I was paying property tax, insurance, bank loan, so I didn't make any money until five year. And even I didn't require city to, uh, give discount in my property tax. So now I have one opportunity. I spent over four hundred thousand for renovation as well as purchase. So for, suppose if project is denied, then again, it, uh, I have, I will be like back, I was in year ago. So it's a little discouragement for me as an investor. So I'm requesting board to see as an economic development, to helping an investor or as a landlord. And, uh, we had a really positive feedback on our neighborhood meeting in, uh, July. There were about four or five, few people was against, but then GoPuff explained then their plan. But there were more than twenty people, uh, with supporting on the neighborhood meeting. So about more than twenty people were supporting in a neighborhood meeting, four or five people. Means they were not sure they are opposing, but once, uh, the counselor from GoPuff explained that we are not to create a crime, or we are, no, we care about your safety also, neighborhood safety. We are, we will be the good neighborhood in future. So I am also as a landlord requesting board and chairman to the board. So please, uh, consider what you can. Thank you so much.
Any questions for this gentleman? He's the landlord of the property. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in favor? Seeing none at this particular time, is there a spokesperson who care to speak in opposition? You'll have ten minutes, and then the next person's three, three, and so on.
Hello, I'm Timothy Jones. I'm, uh, pastor at Peace Forest Baptist Church in Cedar Grove. I'm also a part of the Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association called CARES, the South Shreveport Voters League, and almost all of the groups that impact the quality of life in the Cedar Grove community. Uh, my address will be eighty-two hundred St. Vincent Avenue. Uh, I'm a lifelong, I was born and reared in Cedar Grove, and I get up every morning to go to work in Cedar Grove to, um, positively impact the quality of life there. Um, we don't believe a liquor store, another liquor store. I'm happy to hear the word oversaturated because, uh, you can actually walk about fifty feet to another liquor store. Um, you can go up to the corner. I mean, they are literally everywhere within walking distance. You, you, you have eight or nine liquor stores. I think this is a splendid, um, business model, the idea that you can pull up on your app and order aspirin, or diapers, or ice cream, or whatever you might need at the spur of the moment. But if there is a building where people can walk in, buy liquor, that's a liquor store. At the end of the day, that's a liquor store. That does not improve the quality of life, that is not economic development. Um, that is not what we have in mind to improve, uh, the place where, that so many of us call home. Um, delivering liquor, fine, not a big deal. But here again, I think some type of variance, and I don't even know all of the laws or codes or whatever, but some type of variance that will allow a person in Southern Trace to go on an app to purchase whatever they like to drink, and somebody drive it to wherever they are. Versus anybody sitting in a parking lot, or going into a building, going on an app, and ordering whatever they'd like to drink. Um, that's, that's, that's my, um, my concern, um, my concern there. So, um, I can't.
Just keep going, it, it does.
Okay, okay. All right. So I would ask, um, I would ask this board, or even attorneys, or whomever might be involved with this person, the applicant, to explore some other avenues, variances, or whatever you might call it, that might give them an opportunity to achieve, uh, the objective of their business model. But the residents of Cedar Grove are not interested in another liquor store. So I would ask, uh, respectfully ask that you would turn this down. Because what if this company leaves in six months? This building is still zoned for a liquor store, right? I mean, anybody can come in. I mean, the, the, the zoning is there for a liquor store. We don't want that kind of open thing out there that impacts the quality of life for our community. So thank you for your time.
Before you leave the mic, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right. Board members, are any questions for Pastor Jones? Mr. Bailey, is there any way you can check and see in the back if we can get sound, please?
It's pretty common, Mr. Chair.
Is it?
I have to attend both city council and parish commission meetings, so the sound will be returning.
May I, may I also offer another note? I've, I visited with.
You've still got six minutes.
Okay, thank you. I visited with Mr. Clark and, uh, and our councilman for our area. As it relates to that Google meeting, uh, I think it may have been mentioned, there were maybe nine people there. We had a huge community meeting in Cedar Grove where less than twenty people had even been informed about a meeting. One of the neighbors here forwarded the information to me. I was denied entrance into that meeting. I held the line about twenty minutes and could not get in. I tried a second time to get in. I screenshot and sent, uh, the screenshots, Mr. Clark, so that people could see that I was denied. Uh, and to think that thousands of people, first of all, were not even informed. And if only nine people out of thousands of people were on the call, uh, who else might have been denied? And I, I'm not saying this is by design, I'm just saying the technology didn't work. And it definitely did not work for me, and when most people were not even aware of that, then, uh, that was, that was problematic. But I do appreciate the fact that, um, an in-person meeting was held to follow up because staff obviously recognized that there was a breakdown somewhere there. So, 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 so that may be the reason why, uh, nine people were on that Google meeting. And then let's think about the seventy-five-year-old lady who lives around the block from there, who can't even turn a computer on. Uh, and to say she needs to be on a digital meeting, that's not going to happen. Okay?
Well, we, we can attest to technology right now.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Questions from board members?
Yes.
Ms. Newby?
Um, why we, you were denied the Zoom meeting, or in, I don't, I'm not understanding.
The Google meeting, the initial Google meeting. Uh, I, I wasn't informed at all. I didn't get any notification. Someone here forwarded me the email that they got that was copied to less than twenty people, might I add. Not twenty thousand people in Cedar Grove, less than twenty people. And then I just could not, I was sitting there, and after, it's going to timeout after a while and just tell you, you, you're denied entrance. And I'm like, this can't be happening if this is a public meeting.
So that, Mr. Clark, just a second. So this Google meeting, also known sometimes as a Zoom meeting, it's not what we require for notification? We have NPP requirement for this, for sub, right?
We, they were properly notified, uh, of the meeting. Uh, there were some problems with the, uh, with the Google meet, I think is the, the software that was used. That was part of the reason that, uh, GoPuff agreed to have a live in-person meeting. Because there was just problems with the, uh, with, uh, Pastor Jones made me quite aware of the fact that he could not access the meeting, so they were not getting a true picture of the, the ideas and questions of the neighborhood.
Well, I have another question for you.
For me? Or for you?
For Mr. Clark.
Okay.
Special use permit and site plan approval, which they're before us today for. If GoPuff comes and goes from this location, a secondary applicant at this location would have to go through the same process for liquor lot, for, for the zoning or not?
No, no, ma'am. It's, it's like you were informed, if that special use permit is approved, it's there.
For anyone that has.
If, if it happens and GoPuff leaves, someone else can come and establish a liquor store at the same location.
And that creates grave concern for us.
I understand.
Hmm.
I, I, I want so much better for Cedar Grove. It's where I was raised. I want to see so much, so many better things happening. It's just, if we were looking at this application, you know, prior to so many liquor stores being there, we may have a difference of opinion on how we're looking at this case today. But it is the saturation that's the issue.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there are so many things I like about this plan. I like that people aren't in their car, um, in their cars driving under a delivery program. That eliminates exposure for drunk driving and things of that nature. I like the fact that my Cedar Grove residents here would have an opportunity to engage in something that's twenty-first century and convenient. So it's a, but I understand, I understand the concerns.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Pastor Jones? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward.
I'll say good evening, or good afternoon. My name is Belinda Rose. I'm ten seventeen Babylon Road. Have been a resident of Shreveport, of Cedar Grove fifty-four years. I have been in my house that I am, uh, an owner of over thirty years. So I'm not just here in a fly-by-night where, um, this location is, is, is not gonna be a, uh, a problem. I see the problem. I canvass Cedar Grove, and I see my schoolmates and my classmates in the state of mind that they're in because of drugs and alcohol. You can start at Line Avenue, at the Valero, get your liquor. Or Apollo, right there at Line Avenue. You go a little ways down to Southern Avenue, there's a liquor store. You go right across from Southern Classic, there's another liquor store. You go a little bit ways up past Line, I mean, Linwood, you're dealing with another liquor store. So, yeah, we're very saturated, but do they see the outcome of what going on in our community? No, it's all about a dollar figure. I would suggest, yeah, get a clinic in our neighborhoods, somewhere where our people can just walk in without being questioned as to what their problem is, they just need help. But liquor stores, yes. My grandmother was an alcoholic, so, yeah, I see the side effects. I see the effects of it. I don't care how fancy the name may be, what is not on the building. I see real results when I go in my community. And, yes, opportunity to leave, these people not able to leave. Because, yes, they're giving these, uh, what, giving this beauty of, uh, you can just do your little app or whatever, and I'll deliver it to you. It's still, it still ends the same results. Our people are hurting in the community. So if you want a canvas to see what is needed there, canvas. We need a clinic. We need more places to eat healthy in our community. So liquor store does not, it does not help me, or how fancy it's gonna be as far as an app, you know? We can go to Walgreen. Call Walgreen if you want to get your pamphlets, your powder, or whatever. Keep it that simple. But don't let, let it seem like it's just a little thing, uh, because we're gonna not have anything on the building, or. I live four houses from three, four hundred thousand dollar homes. I bet they didn't go in that area and ask if they can put one. See, that's my neighbor. But you can come on my street, there are drive-by shootings all the time. There's, uh, alcohol and, and drug use all the time, so it's not fancy where I live at. And I don't get paid to get up here and say, oh, I live on Babylon and, uh, you can just put one there for me. No, we don't want it. We hope and pray that you all would see the frustration and the hurt in our citizens in Cedar Grove, to know that we have to live here. They're fly-by-night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Before you go, Ms. Rose.
Oh, sorry.
When I said I grew up in Cedar Grove, I grew up in the nine hundred block of Babylon.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who care to speak in opposition to this request?
Curtis, I was West Sixty-Eight, West Seventy-Six, West Seventy-Seven. We ran it. There's nothing wrong with it.
Hi, my name is Lucy Smith, and I'm the president of the Eden Gardens Neighborhood Association. Uh, we have a petition that's signed by a hundred and twenty-five people. And, um, I didn't even get all of them, but, um, we really, we really just don't need another liquor store in our community. Belinda started, and what I want you to realize is that you have, she said the Valero. There's Apollo Liquor across the street, uh, right there at Seventieth and Line Avenue. And then you go on down and you have the Unlimited Liquor, Daiquir place. You got the Circle K, and then, um, I left my list with the whole, it's like ten of them. I mean, between Line Avenue and Linwood, you got all of these liquor stores. Not to mention right up the street on Line Avenue, up the hill, from Seventieth to Melrose, I think it's Melrose or Montrose. It's, uh, Tony's Liquor Store right up there. So, I mean, you, and you go on down to Pyramid, and you got the Cuban Liquor Store. So why would we want another liquor store? Not to mention that it's right there next to Linwood Middle School, the academy there, it's on the corner. It's like a block over. You got Atkins Elementary down the street off of, uh, St. Benson. I mean, it doesn't make sense to say, and I like the, 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 the plan. It's good, yeah, send, send out all of this other stuff, but send out hard liquor? Do you know, do you know who's at home with mental problems? Do you know how many men and women beat their husbands and wives? Do you have any idea how many decide, well, let me see if I want to take my gun out. Ooh, let's oil it up and let's go down here. Yeah, let me have my drink. I got some liquid courage. I can go down here now and shoot up whoever I want to shoot up. It doesn't make sense. It does not make sense to put this in our community, and we have some seniors there. Not only the children, but we have seniors there that really, they just want to live out their lives in a peaceful way.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave the mic, would you please give us your mailing address?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Lucy Smith, six twenty-two Hendrix Place, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh six.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a question.
For Ms. Smith?
Can you hear me, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if, I'm just trying to get a bearing on. If there was a modification to this plan, and, but say that there was no onsite sales, but delivery only, would you stand in support of that?
The only way it could be a modification is that you don't sell hard liquor. You already selling beer and wine. Why do we need hard liquor there when they can go sets up the street? They can send for, send somebody else. That's why you have your Ubers and stuff. Oh, I forgot, you can't deliver it right now, no way. So why are we even doing this? See, it doesn't make sense to prepare for something that's coming. Oh, you're gonna go lobby the people down in the state?
That's why I, I said they were in front of the curve on this.
Right. So, and my thing is. Right, so and my thing is, we need to catch up with a whole lot of other stuff besides trying to get hard liquor out to the house.
I mean, I see some good things about it from a standpoint of safety, but I also understand the concerns of the neighborhood.
They can always get an Uber or Lyft to go get their alcohol. They don't have to drive. See, that's what I'm saying. When you get that liquid courage in you, you decide that you're gonna get out there and drive.
Which they do now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So so why have it delivered to the house and, oh, I don't want to pay this extra money again. I'm just gonna go ahead and do it myself. That's my point.
All right, Ms. Smith. I believe someone else is waiting their turn to speak.
Yeah, we came together.
I see she's your comfort zone. All right, you may state your name and mailing address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Aura Hart, 7110, I'm sorry, 6911 Bethany Street, Shreveport, 7106. And I'm president of Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association. Cedar Grove affirms real effort here incorporated. And we in Cedar Grove are not against good business partners. I, Charlie was at at the other meeting and he gave us something that was so nice. He brought his little package in, I'm sorry, he brought his little package in. And I just wanted to let him know that I really appreciated that and that I did go through it and that I did do the gum and everything that I'm sure he didn't put the package together, I'm sure his wife did. But it was a very good gesture. And we would love to have him as a business partner in Cedar Grove. Seeing that we have needs, as Lucy said, we're, I mean, we could use a nice clinic right in our area. There's so many things that we can use. So many things that we need. And we would love to have MPC come and work with us, partner with us as we look at Cedar Grove. And you see our real effort. Look at what we have. I mean, if you look at your budget, if you do your budget, if you do that, you don't go in, you women, you don't go in your closet and keep putting in what more of what you already got in there. You look in there and see what you need and that's what you buy. Man, when you go out to purchase things, you don't keep purchasing the same thing. The two, 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 to the, I can't think of his name, but to that that does the paper. He doesn't keep doing the same thing over and over. Look at Cedar Grove, look at it for real. Look at, look at it as the same kind of neighborhood that you live in. Do for Cedar Grove what you would desire for your own neighborhood. That's all we ask. And we are certainly in opposition again, not to the business frame. I'm sure, I mean, they know what their demographics were all about. They know what their research was all about. Now, if there's a problem with the State Liquor Commission, with the city and the parish, then look, you all need to get that straightened out and let us see that you really work for the people in this area, not for the business that are coming in to take the dollars and leave us in the same state.
Ms. Hart, before you leave, is there any questions for Ms. Hart? Are there? Here you go, ladies, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who cares to speak in opposition to this request?
I'd just like to let you know, Mr. Andrew, that we're trying with everything we have to address the sound system.
All right. Sweetheart, speak just as loud as you possibly can.
Okay. Hello, my name is Linda F. Jeter Jones and I'm from the Cedar Grove area. I'm at 302 West 68th Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7106. I can walk to this building from my house. And we have lots of issues right there on those two little small streets, 68th and 69th Street. As far as the neighborhood meeting, I didn't get anything. The only thing I really got was the zoning. And I have the city of Shreveport like on speed dial because there's so many things that needs to be done in that area, just that little area, that I'm not getting help with. And I I sent out a certified letter to the mayor, to I think it's Ms. Levett Fuller and to Mr. LaCour or Mr. Green, whomever these people are that's supposed to be over this area. But like they've already stated, we have the Circle K. We have the liquor store about 50 blocks to the left of that, a feet to the left of that. And it is so congested right there in that area with the classic chicken. They take up like lines and lines to try to get in and get to your house from over there, so that's really congested. And then this would be like right across the street from it, providing this is going to be a walk-in. You know, I didn't know that it was not supposed to be a walk-in. And in that neighborhood, we have very few homeowners on those two streets. And the ones that are left there, they're like in there, besides myself, there's like six other owners and neighborhood, you know, homeowners. And they're like senior citizens and they wanted to be here, but they could not be here. But they are in opposition and that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, any questions for Ms. Jones?
You said that you sent a certified letter to the city for issues that exist.
I have lots of issues, yes, right then and there.
Just give me just a handful of things that need to be addressed.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get an idea of what.
I didn't bring my glasses. There was like, there's this ditch, this drainage ditch that runs from St. Vincent to like Linwood.
I used to play in it as a child, I know.
Okay, well, you couldn't get in there now because it is just full. You can't tell there's a ditch there. There's so much debris and everything. And about four months ago, we had one lady that went to the hospital. She stayed in the hospital like maybe a month because there was drainage from from the Farina, Gobtown and also Ecomatch that was stuck down there and it had such a stench, we couldn't even sit outside on our front porches. We had to close the doors. And finally, we got in contact with someone from, need to get my glass. Yeah. The guy that came out from the state.
How did you?
It came out from the state. You see, Department, yeah, Department of Environmental Hazardous Waste. He came out and he walked that thing and he found out where the culprits were. And he got that part taken care of, but the rest of that has not been addressed. And this has been since I wrote this letter. My first letter I wrote, I sent it via the Google and they gave me a code. They said I was a Code Three when I told them these things was going on. So then I called the mayor's office, I'm like, what is a Code Three? They didn't, they couldn't tell me what what a Code Three was. You're like, where do I stand in line to get some of these things rectified, you know? And anything that happens, they come down, it's Ms. Linda, Ms. Linda. You know, they're they're not gonna call in because they don't want to give their name and address or whatever, have a problem with it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Jones, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here present who care to speak in opposition to this request?
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kenny Gordon and I grew up here in Eden Gardens as well. My address is 630 Hendrix Place and I'm right down the street from Mrs. Smith. I'm in agreement with everyone else. We have enough liquor stores in that area. Another liquor store is not going to help. All it's gonna do is bring down the area, the area is already down. We need something to bring it up and we don't have that. Liquor store is not gonna do that. One thing that the lady said that I was in agreement with and that is the other things that they're trying to sell and that they deliver to people like aspirins and things of that of that nature. Those things are great. Why liquor? Why do we have to have a liquor store? Why do they need to develop, send liquor to people and so forth? We don't need that. We need what they got, which is the aspirins and things of that nature. I'm in, I'm not in agreement with them putting liquor there. We have enough liquor stores. And I hope that you vote against it. Because we got too many, we got too much liquor. We need something else. I don't understand why they have to put a liquor store in there. Why do I, why do they have to sell liquor? They've got a lot of good things in there that people need. Why liquor? All it does is impair your brain. I do a lot of research. I have done a lot of research on liquor. I'm an ex-teacher. I taught math for the Houston Independent School District. I used to live in Katy, Texas, where there was no liquor stores. We didn't have people going out, running over people and and things of that nature, because there was no liquor stores. Now I come back here to Shreveport, my hometown, and they want to put a liquor store out there. Where there's enough liquor stores, we don't need anymore. I know I'm sounding redundant, but I can't help it. We have too many liquor stores. We need to get rid of some of the ones we have. And I think the area would be a better area. But to add to it, I think it will be a travesty. So I'm asking you, I'm begging, I'm pleading, that you vote against this because it is not conducive to improvement in our community. Thank you.
All right, here. We thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Gordon? Did I say that right? All right. As he takes his seat, I'd like to take the opportunity and invite everyone in the room, if you're in opposition to this request, I'm going to invite you to stand for a head count, please. If you're in opposition to this request, give our staff a chance to do a head count. All right, thank you very much. And if someone else has a burning desire to say something that has already been said, you're welcome to come to the mic. Otherwise, we're going to go to a rebuttal. Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Jones. My address is 252 East 71st Street in Cedar Grove. I live 0.5 miles from the proposed location. I think the opposition is not necessarily their business model. The opposition is that for you all to okay this location to be approved for liquor sales. Because from my understanding, from when Pastor Jones asked, that once it's approved, then if they choose to leave, it will always be open for any other liquor store to come through. Am I wrong? Is that the correct answer? Once it's approved, then any luck, once it's zoned for liquor sales, then any other business that choose to come in can possibly come and sell liquor at that location.
Your statement is halfway correct. There, we think that there's like a six-month period that they can shut down and during that six-month period, another liquor store could be established. Otherwise, it would have to come back through this process.
Okay, because like they said, they have a great business model, but why won't they take this business model for Suite B into another neighborhood? Why isn't it brought into the Broadmoors, the Spring Lake, the Elbe Road neighborhood? Because Cedar Grove compiled of all the way from Yuri Drive all the way back to Mansfield Road. You telling me we're the only location for this business model or to get this particular building zoned for liquor sales? As we have stated repeatedly, none of us in the community, or majority of us, were aware of any type of business, neighborhood participation, especially the one on May 20th that was supposed to have been by Google Meet. Then my understanding, there was supposed to have been one on July the 8th, but it was delayed until August. Is that August of 2021? Because this is the fourth day of August. So when was that meeting held and where?
I don't remember the date of last meeting either.
Because.
It was in July though.
Okay, I thought the July 8th one was delayed until August and you stated that y'all had one in August.
We had one in July.
Okay, so the one on July the 8th, when and where was that held at and how was that notification given out?
The meeting was held at the Care's Building, I think that's the name of it, by A.D. Palmer Rec Center. And the notifications, I don't know if we sent out, because it was not a required neighborhood participation plan meeting. But the neighborhood associations actually made the notifications to the citizens of that meeting.
So my understanding that when you all planned the second meeting, you contacted all the different neighborhood association in District C, D, A, and F? And that they were supposed to in turn contact the members of the community?
We could go through this long.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand if the information was given out. Because just like that opportunity for that first case number to have another neighborhood participation, why can't we?
No one has requested another meeting, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'm requesting another meeting.
There may not be a need for another meeting, depending on the decision of this meeting. I think you need to address the concerns that you have.
Well, I'm trying to make sure, Mr. Clark, all my information is factual because I'm sitting up in the audience. Because they are trying to make a monetary investment, we're making a human investment to our community, our neighborhoods, our residents, and also to our property taxpayers. I mean, we're hearing all this different information, but if they done their research, then they could have chose somewhere else. Due to the pandemic, we're doing a lot of things by the, that we have to.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Your three minutes is up.
Oh, okay, all right.
But thank you so much for expressing your concern.
Well, I hope that you all vote no, because not for now, but for for first time. We don't want another liquor store in our neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. I know I saw one more person. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is June Melendez, 804 Ragmar Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I used to live in the Cedar Grove area. It's just kind of hard to say where to start. And I came first to, something was put on my mind, said hidden agendas. Being of color, dealing in our community, there are always hidden agendas. Just something to think about. To me, being in my community, being that I have heard us being announced as a they or a them or those. We are a community. We work together. We help one another when we can. I'd like to thank these people for wanting to make sure that our drunks stay drunk. That's all right. But I learned, being that I've been in military 20 years, retired, EO. We in the community are trying to change the behavior. If you can't change the behavior, then what is happening is gonna continue to happen. You can't have someone to go into to 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 get help, alcohol AA, and then right outside you have somebody selling the alcohol for them. How does that change the behavior? Yes, we all have a choice. They have a choice to go somewhere else. We have a choice to save our community. If you want to come again, put some houses in in Cedar Grove. Put a playground in Cedar Grove, because our chairs don't have anywhere to go. I just thought I'd throw that out. Behavior. All of us are not terrible people. There are some of us that want to live a life of luxury, but that wasn't our cards. So we learned to deal our cards differently. Or we choose another game and the game shouldn't be alcohol or what. And the game shouldn't be alcohol or what? Alcohol doesn't help us. It's okay, when you want to celebrate, we should celebrate. But if you want to come to the community, you tell me. You should come to my community before you build anything what your thing is. But we are not them, those, and thus. We are the community. We are people. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Melendez. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this particular time-
Sir?
I said, "Thank you very much."
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. At this particular time, uh, we're at a rebuttal.
I can't hear. I, I suffer from-
It's okay. The applicant now has the opportunity to come in and do a rebuttal if you choose to.
Before my rebuttal time begins, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and, and it may not be something we have, it seems like for certain today. But my understanding of the rules was that the, the sup is a permit that was applied for by a specific tenant, that being Go Puff. And so unlike an outright rezone, and unlike when an alcohol permit is actually issued, a sup, my understanding, was issued to the tenant and was tenant-specific. Are we here today saying that it's property-specific?
I guess I'm trying to understand what you're trying to ask.
So the concern about if a sup, if the, the specialty use permit is granted today to Go, Go Puff, whether someone can follow behind them and use that same permit? My understanding was that it was tenant-specific.
It is. They would have to-
Okay. So then how does it then follow whoever, if another person-
The particular location would still be approved.
So then that would make it property-specific?
Right.
Okay. If y'all, is that something I can get a copy of in an ordinance? Okay.
We can provide you with that information.
Yeah, I want to get that if we can, Mr. Clark, because that's important, um, obviously for our, um, client. In terms of a rebuttal, you know, I certainly hear what each one of you have to say. And I hope that, you know, I stand here before you today with respect for you. And I, I definitely hear you guys at community.
You'll need to talk to us.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to at least say that I, I personally do respect every single thing that they, they said and the concerns that the community has. And I want to reiterate that our client shares the same concerns. They have similar goals in terms of maximizing this property. But beyond this property, the area in which they're going to be located. Um, the inclusion of what our client sells at this location, it's not going to make liquor sales go away or not go away. Liquor sales aren't going anywhere. And I would like to also remind everyone that over a hundred petitions were signed in favor of this by neighbors and by neighboring businesses. Because they too see this as an extension of something that could maximize the use of this area and the attractiveness of this area. Not only to try to persuade other businesses to come to the area, but also to, to do anything they can to not see crime. And to not see, uh, this business, they, they have a vested interest to see this business succeed and this area succeed. If this is where they're going to locate. They currently have plans right now for thirty-two other centers to locate throughout the state of Louisiana. And this is Shreveport's opportunity to have one of the first three. I just would respectfully request that each of you would consider that, would consider the positive impact that this could have in terms of bringing this business and extending this business's use. And I would also respectfully ask that you not unfairly compare them to businesses that I've heard today, or other alcohol permit holders that I've heard today that the community may have issues with. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The delivery radius is what?
That would be a question for our store man, our general manager. Do you know, Tracy, what the particular radius is for this delivery area?
Deliver to, we try to keep delivery within twenty to thirty minutes. So it depends on the distance where they are.
That's all of Shreveport.
That's the whole city.
That's the whole city.
Just about.
Thirty minutes, yeah.
Yeah. Are the delivery drivers employed by Go Puff? Are they, are they a third-party?
They're ten ninety-nine drivers.
Okay. How many of those do you employ?
Right now in the pool, I have about sixty-five.
Sixty-five people without liquor sales?
Without liquor sales.
What percentage of yourselves do you anticipate in terms of revenue the liquor will bring?
I'm not privy to that information. I don't get that because we not, we don't have the alcohol. From my understanding, in previous meetings that I've been in, liquor sales make up about seven to eight percent of sales for the overall.
I was gonna say six, on a guess. Um, will this, will this business make it at this location without the liquor sales?
Would it make it without alcohol? Yes.
Okay. This question maybe for, probably should be for the, for the lady at the podium. Are there any other locations slated or for the future in Shreveport?
I don't know. I would assume that they, if it's a successful location, that they would. Metairie was their first location. And right now they're, uh, slated for a second Metairie location in the fall, based upon how well they've done.
Why this location? Why West Seventieth and Downell?
There is a real estate group that, uh, they have, they are headquartered out of Philadelphia. And they have regional representation across the United States. And they work with realtors and commercial real estate groups in order to provide all of the information that goes into making that decision. The analysis is enormous. I do know that one in particular is, like I said earlier, where they're getting a lot of, uh, inquiries from, or look, looks people are searching. That's one of the components. But I know that an enormous analysis, uh, and investment is put into that.
Well, I mean, there, there are a lot of things I see. I mean, it's a, it's low, it's a low-cost, um, real estate area. But it's a high traffic. And it's, and it's interstate. So logistically, I could see why that is important to a company that delivers. It's easy to get around, cost-efficient. But, you know, we've got issues in Cedar Grove. That's, that's a given. This is, this is a tough case.
I understand.
Because I want to move Cedar Grove forward, but it has to be the right fit. If we didn't have as many liquor stores as we have there now, I would be inclined to say I support this. I'm trying to figure out a way. I, I'd love a way for y'all to be able to resolve this with the citizens.
I, I completely agree and I understand. And I think we all have a common good here. I, I guess my response would be to consider, and I don't, I don't, I'm not privy to it, but what other businesses are trying to come here that would do the same thing as us in terms of maximize the use and attract, uh, a, a certain business setting or development, or things I'm hearing the community wants. I don't know what the other businesses are that are trying to locate in this area, but perhaps compare Go Puff to those.
It's an advancement.
They're, they're an interested-
It's made that an advancement of the wrong, with the wrong product.
Um, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Katie Goodson.
Miss Spencer. Um, have y'all looked at any of, any of the other areas in Shreveport?
I'm not sure. That's not, the real estate group handles that. Um, and they spend a lot of time, you know, determining where the best place is or where availability is, where a central location is, in terms of outreach, and where they think a delivery area will exist.
Cause I, I'm understanding what the, what their concern is for the liquor stores. Because when you do have so many liquor stores in so many different areas, I mean, I mean, the same area. I mean, you know, it can become an issue. So, um, I was just asking if you looked at any of the areas.
Well, they, because they service the entire city essentially. Where the headquarters is, you know, I, I, I'm assuming is based on the cen, central location, close to a commercial corridor, close to an interstate. There's lots of factors. I, I do not know exactly what all of them are.
Yeah. Without a doubt, it's very central.
Ms. Goodson, thank you so much.
We have a question.
One more question. You currently sell beer and wine?
Sir?
They currently sell beer and wine?
They do not currently, they are allowed by right. And, uh, they plan to apply to do that. And my understanding is they meet all of the requirements in order to do so.
But they can't do the delivery to you.
Say it.
All right.
They can't do the delivery yet.
Right. See, that's the, that's the rub here. Is the delivery is not allowed.
All right. Any more questions? Ms. Goodson, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
At this particular time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Sir, she was your spokesperson for the ten minutes.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Joseph and a second by Ms. Jackson to deny, please vote. All in favor, vote yes. Opposition, vote no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. This particular time, we'll call case number twenty-one.
You better know on your, you better know. It's okay, it passed anyway. I mean, it denied.
This particular time, you'll hear case number twenty-one dash one hundred dash C, Vintage Design Group. I think that's a confusion what the application is, Mr.- All right. Let's, let me repeat this, uh, Vintage Design Group, is that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Holden's LLC?
Uh, yes, that's the, uh, that's the owner. Uh, yes, um, my name is, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Marcus Hobbs. And, um, I'm representing Vintage, Vintage Design Group, the applicant.
Mr. Hobbs, we have no microphone. We're gonna have to get you to yell.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, uh, my name is Marcus Hobbs. I'm from Vintage Design Group.
Does it work?
Microphone don't work.
Oh, it doesn't?
Just speak.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, I, I'm from Vintage Design Group and, um, representing the applicant. And, um, we are, uh, the project is, uh, the southeast corner of Pyramid Road and Willard Avenue. And we are requesting, uh, a zoning change from single-family residential, uh, R dash one dash seven to C, C dash one, neighborhood commercial. Uh, it's approximately point three-six acres that, uh, we're requesting the change for. And, um, the, we are, uh, the purpose of, is to construct a new retail center, uh, for light, commercial. And, um, the adjacent properties to the north are, uh, Zone C one and C two respectively. And the, the corridor commercial to the east is, uh, zoned R dash one to the south and east, east of the, of the site. And I'm just here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions for this gentleman? Well, so far, so good.
Hang on. I'm sure I can find one.
You still looking for it? Look up behind you on the screen.
It's, is there an existing, I'm, I'm, okay.
I also wanted to add that the, um, the owner of the property, uh, wants to serve the needs of the community, uh, in a positive way. Uh, and as I said, the, there's a commercial property to the right of the property that is already commercial. Uh, and it's, uh, it does butt up to the, uh, residential, uh, residential property already, so.
It's a vacant lot, ma'am?
It's a vacant lot, yes, ma'am.
Just go down your picture, you can see it across the street.
Yeah, I got, I got it. I just, some of them started running together. I now remember from yesterday. I got it. That's all I had.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any more questions for this gentleman? All right. Is there anyone else present who wants to speak in favor of this, uh, request? Anyone else present to speak in favor? Anyone present to speak in opposition? Anyone present to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Newby. Second by Mr. Joseph. All those in favor, please vote yes, the green one. If in opposition, vote no, it's the red one.
Yeah, don't vote in opposition.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I didn't name anybody.
Do we need to try to correct the records on a vote, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to try to correct the votes on the record on a vote?
We do, because I really actually thought I hit the green one.
On the case prior? She gave the, she made the second. And then, and, you know, unintentionally voted.
Yeah, I did. Because I, I thought I hit, I might just hit it.
Emily can make that correction that she actually voted yes.
Yeah, I did, cause I- Okay. Thank you.
She fixed.
Because Mr. Andrews is not gonna let me.
Under the bus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Public Security.
You may be excused.
You had already gave me the, oh.
I thought I meant you meant to vote.
Did you say the vote I gave you?
All right. At this particular time, we're gonna call for case number twenty-one dash one three dash C, Ambiance, Queens Nails.
And I've been informed, Mr. Andrews, that we do not have a microphone problem. We have a speaker problem. So we will not have sound probably the rest of this hearing.
All right, sir. Thank you for letting us know that. Sir, if you don't mind, you can lower it just a little bit, but that mic's not gonna work. So if you'll talk loud enough, we'd appreciate it, okay?
All right. All right. I'm CJ Johnson, uh, three thousand and four West Seventy Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero eight.
And you want us to do what now, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I was trying to do a rezoning for, uh, I'm in a C, C two to a C three. Uh, I invested in a, um, a, um, a party rental, um, um, equipment, like you rent party stuff, like chairs and different things for weddings and baby showers. And, and so I also have the building that connected to it. So I was gonna have like, uh, like a reception house to have the baby showers and wedding receptions and stuff. So I had to, for me to do that, I had to get a, change my zoning from a suit, C two to a C three. And I went around the neighborhood and got about maybe fifty people to sign the petition, see if they're petitioning against it. They said they had no problem. Um, I did emails, social media. So I'm just, that's the only reason, only way that I could be able to have, uh, a, uh, baby showers and stuff, if I changed the zone to a C two to a C three.
So what I heard you say was one part of it, you'll be renting equipment out of it?
Yeah, it's, it's in the same thing. Yes, in my building, yeah, my building, yeah, the, the rental stuff will be in the back. My building is kind of big, so I can have like the receptions, uh, the wedding receptions and the baby showers in the front. And also if they want to rent, I have people to rent stuff like balloons, out, whatever they want.
All right, sir. Any questions for this, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Do you know the history of this building? Was Taco Grande in this building?
Yes, uh, it was a, uh, a, a food place, right? I mean, a grocery store. Yeah, it was a grocery store, yes, ma'am, yeah. Yeah, so I had put a lot of work in and to try to get it cleaned out, yes, ma'am.
Had many meals in there.
Oh, really?
High school, yeah.
And also I'm bringing a CBD store as well.
I see that. You have that as well?
Yes, ma'am. We have CBD, yeah, so. I have the whole shopping center. So that's my hair store, then the CBD store, then the, the actual thing.
That used to be the meat market.
I can't remember. Yes, sir.
Where is there enough parking to have events there?
Uh, it's gonna be on a small scale. It's not gonna be, it's just gonna be like baby showers. Uh, we probably can park at least about, and also the neighbor, uh, he, he owned his place as well. So I use his place, uh, for parking. So we probably can get about maybe twenty-five cars at least. And, and we don't have, we have room in the back as well. So for my VIP customers or- And, and we don't have, we have room in the back as well, so for my VIP customers or for whoever having a party, I just park them in the back, we can get about ten cars in the back.
Have Mr. Sater when?
Mr. Sater?
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could respond to Mr. Sater, 'cause I asked the same question, uh.
How many?
And they share it with me that most of these events will be handled after five o'clock. And therefore, these businesses.
Be closed, yeah.
Will be closed.
You said the magic word, most. I mean, we do Southern Hills business and we run out of room. And we're not on a, an area that's trafficked, is what this is.
Well, we only have, like, I only can fit so many people in, in my building, so I don't try to, I'm not charging or nothing or anything, so it's just a small family thing, it's not like we have in, I, it's only four or five things that I'm having, that's baby showers, wedding, bridal showers, um, uh, we not having any kind of like wedding receptions or nothing like that, that will take people to have party and that like that, we not having any parties. So it would, it would just, the small, it would be a small scale of people.
And I, and I look forward to you doing it, I had, I'm part of Southern Hills Business Center.
Yes, sir.
And I guarantee you.
Yeah.
Once a month, we get somebody wants to come in there, they don't tell you, oh, we're just gonna have a couple friends in, and I get a phone call that, hey, Saturday night, they've taken over everything, that they need somebody to take care of traffic.
No, we gonna close that, I mean, it's only like, it's only set up for like, you have a four-hour minimum, so you have baby showers, you have like three hours here, three hours, so it's not like it's a eight to ten, or eight to twelve, it's nothing like that, it's just kind of like, you book your, your event from, from, we start at eleven o'clock in the morning, so eleven to two, and then from like three to four, then our last one for like four to seven, and they out of there. On Saturdays, on weekends, on Sundays rather. So it's not like they party, you know, coming in, partying out, it's real small.
I understand where you're coming from, but you need to learn to pull your boots up, 'cause they'll wanna take advantage of any way they can.
Yeah, we'll shut, I'll shut it down. Yeah, I shut it down. Yeah, they sign a contract as well about the, the minimum, 'cause my, my, we only can fit so many people. You know, due to the COVID and all that stuff, so we definitely not gonna have a lot of people there, so.
Any more questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else present to speak in favor of this request? All right, hearing none, is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? All right? Seeing none, board members, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Newbert and second by Mr. Morton, please vote yes, if you're in favor, no, if in opposition. You got it?
Ma'am, I'm agreeing.
Watching your plate. All right.
Got it.
Very good, motion passes, we're at case number twenty-one dash five dash SC, Final Platt, Seeley and Company. Anyone here with Seeley and Company? I thought I saw someone earlier.
Um, someone just walked out, but that, was it the gentleman sitting over that way?
Chris Stokes, maybe, is it Stokes?
I think he just went out the door. Curtis, was he over there?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side?
I don't know if Stokes, uh, let's see.
I think this is pretty, uh, pretty, uh, ordinary and systematic, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jean, our resident subdivision expert, could ask any questions any board member may have.
Board members, you remember the presentation on yesterday? Any questions relative to this that our staff might be able to answer?
If none, I move to approve.
Well, we gotta have an opposition.
Wait, do we have?
Is there anyone present who would care to speak in opposition to this request? We're talking about case number twenty-one dash five dash SC. All right, hearing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Joseph.
Second, Newbert.
Second by Ms. Newbert, all those in favorable, yes, opposition, vote no. This particular time, that motion carries. We'll call for case number twenty-one dash twenty-seven dash P, zoning request, Joseph S. Parton's Architect. Say it again for me, please.
Joe, I have to apologize for Joe, uh, he had a sudden death of a niece last night, she died in her sleep, eleven-year-old little girl. Um, so he called, let me know that I was gonna be representing myself today, so excuse me, I've never been before this commission, um, my name is Michael Reardon. Um, I'm a lifelong resident here, born and raised in Shreveport, I've had a number of businesses over the years, probably employed a thousand-plus people in this town. Um, I have been working for the last couple of years, uh, purchasing one piece of property at a time, and managed to collect about seven different properties that I could consolidate into enough area to where I could develop a, uh, community, uh, center area, uh, little shopping center, uh, office-type, uh, center. Uh, I brought, uh, I have brought, you know, images, didn't realize, like, again, I've never been here before, so I brought some big-time images that I could pass around for you guys, if you wanna pass it around and get some ideas of, of, of what, uh. It's not gonna fit under there, I don't think.
I'll take them, Ben.
I have, I have, uh, I have two sets of them, so. Yeah, it might go quicker, but anyway, uh, you can try, sure, sure. Uh, basically, uh, I've been, I've been very fortunate to have negotiated seven, seven different properties and been able to consolidate to about five acres of property, uh, located directly across the street from the Kroger Marketplace on Ellerby Road. Uh, I, I have the property next door to Barksdale Federal Credit Union and the property behind, uh, as well as a property behind Barksdale Federal Credit Union, uh, they were very gracious with me, uh, willing to move their driveway to connect into what I'm wanting to do, so that we could, we could comply with DOT concerns, uh, for traffic and that sort of stuff. Um, I've sent all these types of images to, um, to, uh, the president of the Homeware Association, which is the closest one to me, the only one I knew that I could possibly offend, uh, and they posted it on their, uh, community website so that they could see what I was doing, 'cause they had a lot of curiosity. Um, and I've spoken to their president on a couple occasions, and to my knowledge, I haven't heard anything. Um, I did have one lady that was, uh, that was challenged, 'cause I would've been very close to her, uh, but as of yesterday, um, she contacted me and she's also selling her property to me, and, um, I'm, I'm making certain that she's able to get into a place she's very excited about. So, uh, pay a little more than I wanted to for it, but I, I'd rather do that than, um, than, than to try to impose on my neighbors. Um, basically, um, I've also got a, uh, I guess you can see the, I've got these images like this right here, the, that, what you're looking at right there, or like a restaurant-type environment. Uh, I'm gonna have offices as well as boutique-type, um, um, retail or destinations, I'm, I'm thinking more of a destination-type environment, uh, where people would go get their hair done, shop boutiques, foodies, uh, things of that nature. Uh, I've got a, um, a, kind of a image of a site plan that I know is here somewhere. Well. Well, that's just dandy. I think I sent more to one than I got confused with, anyway, this is a consolidation of the, uh, of the lots. Let me see what you got here, maybe it's in here, but. These, are these mine? Oh, okay, okay, I was just looking for, maybe it's in there, that's yours too?
Yeah.
Okay. Huh, anyway, I'm so sorry. Um, but there's a, there's probably gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of green zone in the middle, I've got an area, I've been very careful when I've taken out properties, um, to leave as many of the large trees as possible, 'cause they're hard to replace, and I'm trying to create an environment where people wanna go, uh, like a park-type environment. Uh, I'm gonna have a, a, a deck, a public deck, that's built out, that's, that's in an, over ninety feet by, uh, by, by sixty feet, that is gonna be a green zone area where people can come and speak or, or have festive occasions, and I'm gonna open that up to the public. Um, it's gonna be, uh, the style, as you see, is gonna be more like a farmhouse boutique-y style, there'll be duplexes as well as antique farmhouse and, uh, antique hardware store appearance. Uh, there'll be brick veneer, and there'll be about thirty-two hundred square feet each building, but there'll also be duplexes to where they could take half or whole. Um, I am, um, I'm hopeful to, uh, to be able to get started with this whole COVID thing, it's kind of, kind of slowed the whole deal down, and, uh, but, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're hopeful that you can, uh, allow us to change the zoning on a couple of the pieces, we're already zoned commercial, and there were some that I bought that were still zoned, uh, residential. Um, and then also I'm consolidating, I wanna consolidate everything into the city, 'cause some of the properties were actually parish and not city, so, and PS, we've already gotten Redrick, the street that runs in the middle of it, uh, we've gotten that abandoned successfully, so now we own both sides of that street so that I can, I can wall that off and, and, uh, and not disturb anybody. So, uh, we're trying to get zoned from residential to the, uh, I think it is, uh, C one, office retail space.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, you heard this gentleman's request, do you have any question for him? It's a, it's a lofty goal you've got set there.
Yes, sir.
Sounds awfully impressive.
It does, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, it's probably gonna be a, you know, it could be about a seven million dollar project for me.
I'm excited about that green space and that, that outdoor deck.
One thing's for sure, that, that fountain across the street over there was one million dollars all by itself, just.
Yeah, I understand, but that's 'cause you didn't have me contract to do it for you.
That was just a water feature.
Yeah, I find if you budget something, you'll spend it, if it's a million dollars, you'll spend it.
Got you. Any questions for this gentleman?
Did I hear you say that you worked with Barksdale Federal Credit Union?
No, ma'am, uh, I, uh, own a company called Everything Mark, and I own a company called National Mail it here in Shreveport for over thirty years, about thirty years, uh, sold it to a, uh, equity group two and a half years ago. Uh, still own the building on Yuri Drive, uh, the old Morrison Dixon building, uh, on Yuri ninety-one, fifty-one Yuri, and I, and they, they rented from me and they've added more jobs since I sold it, I was, I was tickled that they didn't, I didn't lose any employees in that mix. Uh, they were all, uh, cared for, and then I took the great talented ones, uh, with me and, and continued with another business that I have there now.
No, I, I, I think what I, what I was trying to, I'm sorry, I didn't finish, but that you worked with Barksdale too?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, I, I visited, uh, several times with them, and I purchased the land, half their lot, uh, the, the, the retention pond behind their building, uh, they used, uh, for, for, for drainage, and so that I wouldn't have to eat up too much of my limited space, I was able to negotiate a purchase of that land, increase the size of that retention pond, uh, and still have, uh, it was probably about three-quarters, about three-quarters of an acre that I was able to pick up from them, uh, on the backside, and they were very gracious to open up their, um, close their driveway onto Ellerby and enter into my center. It also will allow them to be able to have a more straight shot through their drive-through, 'cause right now they, they struggle, 'cause they have to go through a turn lane where you have an ATM machine in order to, to leave their drive-through, or you have to cut through their, through their parking lot, which can be dangerous, so uh, in this, they're gonna be able to go have a, have multiple entrances into our center, which will make it better for their customers and safer.
They're, they're a good group of people.
They are good people.
I know Patrick and John Rea.
I couldn't, I couldn't believe how gracious they were to me.
Yeah, they're a very good group of people to work with, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, they are awesome.
Any more questions from board members? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the chamber who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Hearing none, board members?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
I'd like Mr. Reardon to know that, uh, we were notified of the, uh, tragedy that had occurred, and we were really prepared to do a tag-team show to present your application, but.
Just in case I needed it?
Just, you did a much better job than we could've ever considered doing, so. I just wanted you to know, we were prepared.
Well, next time I won't be able to bring such big billboards.
Please bring everything that you can.
All right, seeing no one coming forward to be in opposition, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Sater, I believe, if I'm right? And second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you again.
You will.
All right. Next case is case number twenty-seven dash SC, preliminary and final plat, uh, Moore's and Associates, Javas Family Enterprises.
My name is J.C. Frazier, I live at sixty-nine thirty-eight Oak Hill Circle here in Shreveport. The reason for my being here today is to confirm with each of you, commission members, that we have done everything that the city has required and the things that the community have asked us for. As you see, we were deferred from a previous meeting because we wanted to go back and do some other things. So we do now have, uh, a requirement for a ten thousand square foot lot with twenty-one homes. That's considerable expansion in terms of the size of the lots and a considerable reduction in the number of homes. That's what we were asked for, and that's what we have done. The persons that I've communicated with, or those people who attended the neighborhood participation meeting, I do have the list of those people, if it's anybody who says they don't know about it, or hadn't heard about it, it's because they either didn't come to the meeting, or they did not give me, uh, an email or postal address. But all the folks who have been there are aware of what we're doing, so I just ask if you would approve, you know, what we're trying to do in that community.
All right, sir, any questions or comments for this gentleman?
I would just like to say I'm glad to see you back, I'm glad you could work this out.
Thank you, thank you.
I have one, are there any stipulations that we know of, or everything is pretty well straight up?
Everything is pretty well straight up, and Mr. Frazier's done an excellent job.
He did it.
Applaud him for his diligence, that's for sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present to speak in favor? Anyone present to care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. uh, Newbert, second by Mr. Morton, all those in favor, vote yes, oppositions, vote no. That motion passes, and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item on the agenda, I believe, is case number twenty-one dash seven eight dash C, zoning request has been withdrawn. Is there any required motioning or business that we need to do to accept that?
If you just make a motion and accept it and vote no.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept the, um, the withdrawal.
In the second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Newbert, second by Ms. Jackson, all those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. Very good, well, ladies and gentlemen, we're at a point now, uh, we have, uh, before we get to old business, we have a young man still sitting in the audience, or two. Is this the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Executive Director, before we go into another part of our business?
Yes, sir, uh, I, I was trying to help you make sure that the citizens that were here were properly, did they have applications?
Well, it was for the, uh, this last, uh, docket that was, uh.
Well, it was for this last docket that was...
Withdrawn or deferred?
Yeah, the one that was withdrawn.
If you would like for him to come over.
Yes, sir. Were you here in favor or in opposition?
No, I was against.
Would you care to speak your mind since you're here?
I mean, I can.
I'm so, I apologize and that's why I looked over and I said, well, wait a minute because somebody's still here. You do have the opportunity to voice your concern.
Okay. My name is Reginald Davis, I live at the address of seventy-six fifteen Red Fox Trail, Shreveport, seven one one two nine. My address is directly across the street from this property that was zoned or looking to be zoned as a residential multi-planning apartment complex. I was speaking out against it mainly because the majority of the area is a single-family home residential area. I heard the term earlier used, oversaturated. So between I-20 at Pine Road to Balcom, you have roughly eight apartment complexes, six town home locations, a multi-thousand dollar home development that's being developed, being developed. And at the time, Mr. Smith was, you know, throwing out the idea of a luxury apartment complex. I don't feel that we need another apartment complex. The apartment complexes that's in the area aren't completely staffed, or not staffed, but they're not completely rented out. There are still vacancies in the apartments. And for a luxury tag, although I would like to see luxury items in the West Shreveport area, there's nothing that would kind of draw a luxury tag to the area. We offered the idea to consider ownership, if that was an idea, if you wanted to bring residential living, maybe a luxury town home or a luxury condo where ownership can be gained versus renting throughout the city of Shreveport. To have a luxury tag, then that's going more south in Shreveport right now. So to bring something in that area, I would first think that we need to at least fill the vacancies that's already there versus trying to add something that's eventually going to erode and kind of diminish the area of what we already have.
All right, sir. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Someone else wanted to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Ophelia Boyd. My address is seventy-five...
Do us a favor, sister, my mic's not working. If you'll lower it, talk just a little louder, just a little... Now, there you go.
My name is Ophelia Boyd. I live at seventy-five eleven Red Fox Trail. I totally agree with my neighbor on everything he just said. And at the last meeting where Mr., the builder was actually there, he was describing how the apartments and things was going to be and that it was going to be well-kept and it's going to be security and all that and that he was going to personally be at hand to make sure it stays that way. The word luxury, I mean, it could go in, he could build them as being luxury, but who to say in about ten years from now, you know, they may not no longer be luxury if he don't do the upkeep on them if he decides to sell their apartments? You know, he could sell to anybody he want to sell to. Who to say that they're going to keep them up like he did, you know? It's not, it's some apartments not too far down the street from where I live, right across, right from West Seventy Street, across from that Chase Bank. And I've drawn by there lots of times. He owned furniture out there and mattresses and stuff like that, trash and stuff. And then they have custodial people on the premises that's supposed to pick up paper. It'd be paper everywhere. And they got, they have torn down this fence that surrounds these apartments at least about a dozen times. And these kids, they climb the fence, they tussle the fence. I'd like to know which one of these kids can take and pull them iron bars apart and go through this and make a way through there other walking around. And I don't even see any use for any luxury apartments in our area. All the homes are well-kept. It's a quiet area. That's one of the reasons we moved there and we know each other and the lawns is kept up. And I'm just concerned about them putting them there. I just really don't think it should be there. I know where this builder lives. He has a beautiful home, all up and down bumpkin. He's not too far from where we live, all up and down bumpkin. It's so much land there, so many property there. He can walk out his front door and walk about five blocks down the street and take a left. It's so much land all the way down there. I don't know why he got to squeeze eighty-some units into this little bitty area behind this little store that I guess used to be a store. And I just don't, I don't think it's warranted for him to put those there. I made a suggestion myself. I said, well, my husband and I, we senior citizen now, we looking to downsize them a little while, you know? And I said, why don't you put some senior citizen homes there, nice homes? And I said, I would buy one from you if you would. Oh, no, he said, I don't want to put that there. I'm in the business of building apartments, but like I said, it's so much land, up and down bumpkin just alone, that he could put those apartments. And he want to squeeze these here into our area, you know? We enjoy where we are at. We know each other, we know one another. We walk up and down that street sometimes just for exercise and stuff. And I just think the word luxury is not going to be luxury when he can't rent a unit. The first thing they'll want to do is call in HUD to come in and fill those units because he going to be looking for his money. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am. To her.
Yes.
The gentleman.
Yeah, to her.
All right, Mr. Morton? Can you answer one more question for us, Ma'Hor?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
It was not a question, I was just going to say, there's no way you're a senior citizen.
I am a senior citizen. I'm sixty-five. I can prove that because he's almost seventy and we've been married forty-nine years.
You're so young.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I did have a question. This application is withdrawn. Do we expect to see this in the future?
We don't know. I mean, if it is, and Ben seemed to have some information.
I can answer. Do you want me to stand here?
Yes.
When speaking with the applicant, he did mention to me that there was a dispute with the people that originally owned the land when it came to mineral rights. And because of that, he didn't want to have anything to do with the area anymore, would him not be trying to develop the property in the future specifically there.
Okay. All right, thank you. I was just curious if it was something pending in the near future.
All right. That's something you can put in the back of your mind. Thank you all very much.
Before these citizens leave, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just extend an apology to them for them not being properly notified that this application has been withdrawn and that you had to make a trip down here and you had to sit through three and a, two and a half, what is it, two and a half hours of hearing. My deepest apologies to you and I'll be talking to the board when we start talking about budget to figure out ways to make sure that citizens like yourself never have to come back to a meeting when the case has already been decided.
Thank you.
Your work.
All right.
You appreciate it.
My name is Willie James Boyd. I'm Ophelia, this is my wife. And she got so concerned until she got me involved in it. I used to be a landscaper, but I'm a minister over in Bossier on Texas Avenue. And I see so many things around the neighborhood. When they come around our street around there, they about to turn cars over. You can't sleep at night because you got boom boxes everywhere. And it's then come to my concern to even address this today and something need to be done about it. And we trying to enjoy the golden years, I'd call it, because I worked for GM about thirty-one years. And now I got a heavy job and I can't hardly study. So I feel like if they were going to put that down, I heard him say they withdrew that application for it. That gave me a little bit relief so I can get a chance to read and get some information out to the public to where they can understand. I've been learning in my life is not so much of what a man put in him that defiles him is the results when it come out. Everybody needs to know this. Thank you.
Are you inside the city, sir?
So what?
Are you inside the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, typically speaking with a problem like that, there are community liaison officers with the, with Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department and perhaps maybe with the city of Shreveport. You may want to reach out to them.
Several times I've been...
They're really good at their job.
Several times I've stopped.
Yeah.
The law coming down through there?
Yeah, just reach out to the community liaison officers. Just call Caddo or, I mean, Shreveport's in Caddo, they may send someone out, but they're really good at their jobs. Thank you so much.
Okay, I appreciate your candor.
Yeah.
And y'all teenagers, take care of yourselves.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that concludes our case hearings for today. But we do have one more bit of business that we need to cover and I'm going to stop talking at this point and invite Mr. Clark and his staff to...
And very quickly, Mr. Chair, because we're getting closer and closer to losing a quorum and we do need, I'm going to ask Stephen to do a quick overview of the budget and to determine exact, and ask you to vote on a recommendation that's been made by the executive to committee to adopt this budget.
Okay, just to give you a little background information, can you hear me?
Yes.
The way our budget works, we have, the city of Shreveport is our fiscal agent and every year we submit a budget through them. It's due Friday and we're not even able to put anything together, really start working on it till the first week of August. So that's why you don't get it sooner. So it goes from here, goes to the CAO's office, goes from the CAO's office to the city council and then it is approved by city council in December. So this just kind of gives you a little background for those who've not dealt with that before. So the total budget that we have is one million, six forty-four, nine hundred. Sixty-one percent of the funds are provided by the city of Shreveport. Seventeen percent is provided by the parish of Caddo and twenty-two percent by user fees. Eighty-nine percent of the budget expenses is allocated for salaries and benefits. Two percent is allocated for materials and supplies and eight percent is allocated for contractual services and one percent is for improvements in equipment. There is on, if you'll click on the icon on the budget, you will see a spreadsheet that kind of goes through the budget itself and I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
You went real quick over that split between city and parish on the funding. What is it again?
It is, as far as percentage, it is seventeen percent by the parish of Caddo and sixty-one percent by the city of Shreveport and then twenty-two percent is user fees. But actually, if you really think about it, it's the city of Shreveport allows us to keep the fees, so it's really, they're really funding eighty-three percent overall.
So it's just the user fees from the city of Shreveport?
Yes.
Not Caddo?
We don't get any funds from user fees from the parish there. They cycle back around, back to the parish.
I think one of the key things that, and I don't know, I think Jean may have mentioned it, this budget is basically identical to our 2020 budget. Am I saying that correctly?
That is correct. I would characterize this as a status quo budget. It's just pretty much the same as last year with some minor changes.
And we talked briefly yesterday about just moving forward as business as usual with the uncertainty of what's happening with the parish of Caddo. So this stands to be changed or modified or something in the future?
As I shared with you yesterday, we included the subsidy from the parish because the parish did not tell us to remove the subsidy. They're still, it's my understanding, they're still in the decision-making process to determine exactly what directions they will be taking in 2022. But we're making, taking an act of faith and believing that since they didn't tell us to remove this from our budget, that these funds may be allocated in the year 2022. If that doesn't happen, we'll have to make other arrangements or take some more drastic actions, but we're optimistic that they will continue to allocate that subsidy.
So overall, this really is just a flat budget? I mean, it's comparatively from last year, it's...
No changes. We were not going to be aggressive with the uncertainties about the parish of Caddo. And I think you can respect that because we just don't know and we're trying to protect every staff member that we have to ensure that their employment is not disrupted in any form or fashion.
Does this reflect the full staffing salaries?
This would reflect the full staff covered under salary and requiring us to not have to release any staff members.
And are we fully staff compared to what we were, say, a year ago?
Same staff.
Okay, okay.
Nineteen, I think is the number.
Eighteen.
I always said, want to say, I always, I never include myself, so seventeen plus one.
Yeah.
I guess I'm saying I'll be fired, I don't know.
Well, on behalf of the budget committee, I'll make a motion that you guys accept this report as presented.
A second?
All those in favor?
We need to vote?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I just...
All right, that motion carries. Thank you all very much. Mr. Clark, do either you or your staff members have anything else left?
I have one last thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I always like to keep you informed about staff changes and staff increases or decreases. And I had a conversation about a week, I think it was a week ago, maybe two weeks, I received a letter of resignation from one of our community planners, Marion, Marion, I'll never pronounce her last name correctly, Martian, that her effective date of termination would be from, this office would be August thirteenth. Today I talked with her, she shared with me that she submitted a letter of resignation because she is moving to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and she will be working with the city of Pittsburgh in their planning department. And I'd shared with her that I would like for her to come down to at least say goodbye to you and Ms. Jackson and Mrs. Newbert will understand, but this, she told me I didn't give her any advance notice and she was not properly dressed and she would not be coming down.
That's right.
But I wanted to share that with you that that is happening and we have been actively advertising for a replacement. We're very hopeful that we will find a replacement. It appears that nobody is really knocking doors down to respond to our job offerings, but we are hoping that next week we will get some applicants in.
Mr. Morton would like to know what your dress code is in your department? That they're okay up there, but not here?
What the dress code was in the parking, they're okay up there and not up here?
Well, I mean, wait, wait, she had on pants and I don't, I kind of understood it from my wife.
Take a pass on that. Take a pass. Because you know we as women have to look up.
When she told me that, I just let it alone, Ms. Jackson, and said...
We can have a hair out of place, we not come.
Well, having said that, there's one other thing I want to bring your attention to. There's a progress report in front of you regarding cases heard by the MPC. Take it with you. It's kind of fun to thumb through and see if you recognize some of the ones that created more enthusiasm than others, that you'll see what the city did or choose not, chose not to do or if it's, hadn't anything been done at all. But I want to thank the staff for putting this together and making a surprise of some of the work that we've done. Any other questions or comments?
I just have to say that I think I'm down to four meetings left before we decide what happens with me, so, you know, time is short, it's coming and I still don't know what my disposition is, where I'm going or what I'm doing, if anything.
We're just going to change your mailing address and put you in the city limits. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. This gentleman, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
I tell you, you'll change your address.
Yeah, we gonna.
I step in that motion.